C C P S families, students, staff, and the Caroline community. I Calvin Taylor, Chair of the Board, would like to call the August School Board meeting to order. It is my privilege to welcome those attending in person at Caroline Middle School, as well as those viewing on the C C P S YouTube channel. Each provides an avenue for you to receive information, heightened education awareness, and involvement. The school board is grateful for your attendance as we continue to move our school division in a forward direction as hashtag number one Carolina. Again, welcome to the school board meeting, and now I would like to ask the clerk to call the board's role.
Dr. Michael Hubbard, representing the Bowling Green District. Mr. Lydell Fortune, representing the Mattapanai District. Mr. Calvin Taylor, representing the Port Royal District. Dr. Sarah Calverick, Superintendent of Schools. Dr. Joanna Rollins Fells, representing the Reedy Church District. Mrs. Allison Sears, representing the Western Caroline District. Mr. Sean Kelly, representing the Madison District. And I'm Lisa Stevens, Clerk of the Board. Mr. Chairman, we have a quorum.
Thank you. This brings us to words of inspiration from Mr. Lydell Fortune. Following, we will ask you to stand for the pledge.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good evening, and thank you for being present tonight. Before we begin our meeting, I would like to offer words of inspiration. As quoted by Edward Hale, "Together" is one of the most inspiring words in the English language. Coming together is a beginning. Keeping together is progress. And working together is success. Together, families are stronger. Together, sports teams are victorious. Together, friendships are strengthened. Together is better when unity is a priority. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's stand for the pledge. I pledge allegiance to the flag of nine states of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. I would now need a motion for the approval of the August 2025 agenda.
So moved?
Second.
It's been moved in properly second that we approve the August agenda as presented. Mrs. Clerk, would you call for the vote?
Dr. Rollins Fells?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Hubbard?
Aye.
Mr. Fortune?
Aye.
Mrs. Sears?
Aye.
Mr. Taylor?
Aye, and the agenda stands approved as presented. This takes us to the Achieve 2027 Spotlight Hall of Fame, Ms. Kim Young.
Good evening Chair Taylor, Vice Chair Fortune, members of the school board, and Dr. Calverick. It's with great excitement that I share some historic news. This year marks the launch of the very first C C P S Hall of Fame. This initiative directly supports Achieve 2027 Strategic Plan Goal Two partnerships, specifically by strengthening community partnerships and creating meaningful alumni connections. Over the past year, a dedicated committee of C C P S staff and community members has worked together to bring this vision to life. I'm also proud to share that the Caroline Education Foundation has committed to making this Hall of Fame Gala one of its signature events, ensuring it becomes a cornerstone of community pride for years to come. In this inaugural year, the Hall of Fame will focus exclusively on athletics. Beginning next year, we will expand to honor alumni and contributors who have excelled in the three Es: employment, enlistment, and enrollment. Since this is our first year, we plan to make the class of 2025 a bit larger with up to 15 inductees. Looking at our timeline, our Hall of Fame journey began in December of 2024 when the committee first came together to bring this vision to life. Since then, we've developed nomination criteria, an application process, a scoring rubric, and a sponsorship plan. Tomorrow, August 19th, we will officially begin seeking sponsors and spreading the word to get our community excited. Next Monday, August 25th, nominations will open and remain open until Friday, September 19th. The week of September 22nd, the committee will meet to review and score nominations, select the inductees, and conduct any necessary follow-up research. The week of October 6th, winners will be notified and awards will be ordered. On October 24th, we'll invite our inductees and the community to the CHS football game where we will officially recognize the Hall of Fame class of 2025. Finally, we will honor and celebrate our inductees at a gala in November. So nominations will be collected through a Google form, which will share widely on the C C P S website, social media pages, the C C P S Express, by email, printed flyers, and at community events. The 16-member committee made up of community members, C C P S alumni, and staff have developed criteria for nominations for athletes, coaches, and contributors. Anyone can submit a nomination, and the criteria is clearly stated in the nomination form. Nominees can be graduates of any Caroline High School, Union, Bowling Green Senior, Lady Smith, C T Smith, Old Caroline, and of course Caroline High School. Athletes must be C C P S graduates, recognized for championships, records, and honors, and they must also show strong character and serve as role models. Coaches are evaluated on tenure, victories, championships, and overall service to C C P S athletics, and they must demonstrate high standards and positive impact. Contributors are recognized for dedicated service and support through volunteering, administration, scholarships, or financial and professional contributions. They do not need to be C C S, C C P S employees, but they must reflect honor and character. And then again, on this September 22nd date, the committee is going to come together to review the nominations that we receive. We've created a scoring rubric, and like I said, we will select up to 15 recipients with the highest scores. C C P S staff will then conduct any verification or research that may need to be done later that week so that winners could be notified the following week. We are working to secure a date for the gala in November, which will take place at the barns at Mattapanai Springs in honor this class of 2025. It is funded entirely by sponsorships and will be welcoming inductees and their guests, our sponsors, C C P S leadership, the school board, members of the Hall of Fame Committee, the Chair and Vice Chair of the Caroline Board of Supervisors, and of course, our event hosts, the Caroline Education Foundation. Our goal for the evening is to raise $9,000 to support both the gala and long-term sustainability of the Hall of Fame program. We have three sponsorship levels, $2,000, $1,500. These contributions will help cover the cost of the gala and support future enhancements to include an electronic Hall of Fame board and a dedicated website. Sponsors will be recognized both at the gala and in our promotional materials. By supporting this inaugural celebration, our sponsors are not only helping make this event possible, they're investing in a tradition that will continue to inspire excellence in Caroline County for years to come. By honoring our alumni, coaches, and community contributors, we are reconnecting generations of Caroline County graduates. This Hall of Fame is more than an event. It's a celebration of the people who have made a lasting impact on our community and a way to inspire current and future students to strive for excellence in all areas of life. Together, we are creating a tradition that recognizes the past while investing in the future. And I'll take any questions if you have them.
Do board members have questions at this time? Seeing no one wishing to speak, thank you very much, Ms. Young. We appreciate your input, and I will say congratulations for the future winners of this great opportunity to be recognized. Thank you. Okay, now we will move to the portion of our meeting to recognize the student school board representative.
Good evening Chairman Taylor, Vice Chair Fortune, members of the board, and Dr. Calverick. I'm thrilled to introduce you to our new student school board representative for the 25-26 school year, Jay Kelleher. If you could come to the podium, please. I'm just gonna say a few words to introduce her to our board and our audience. Jay has lived in Caroline her entire life and loves the community and all the people she has grown up with. She is part of CHS's Art and Theater Department and Scholastic Bull Team. Spends her free time creating art and acting, not only within the high school, but around the community with Caroline's Community Theater. And music is her passion. She's been playing piano since she was around nine years old and singing forever. From the application and interview process, Jay shared that as a student school board representative, she would represent the student body at Caroline County Public Schools as a whole, being an outlet for students' voices and opinions within their school. Jay believes communication is key in aiding the efficiencies of our schools, and this position allows for more transparency throughout our school system. Having someone on our school board with direct ties to the students at Caroline boosts student involvement and also allows for students to feel appropriately representative within our school system. And she plans to reach out via social media, flyers, email, school announcements, et cetera, to help communicate effectively and to be able to be that voice. We're excited to welcome you to the school board. You may take a seat on the dais.
While Jay is coming, I would just like to take this opportunity as a school board chair to welcome Jay to the board and to say to those of you, this is a really unique honor for this young lady. She is truly talented. We have been very fortunate. We have had very good student representatives in the past, and I'm sure that she is going to do equally as well as those. We appreciate her being here. She is the link between students and the school board. And what she says matters. So I will say to the students, get to know her. If you have a concern, if you have an issue, she will be more than happy to reach out to you, and we will listen to you. Because I can tell you, you don't want to get the kids mad. It's kind of hard to deal with them when they're not mad. But when you get them upset, you really have something on your hands. So we're gonna do what we have to do to continue to move it forward as #Caroline, number one. Thank you. Now, that takes us to the Spring Athletic Honors with... okay.
Good evening Chairman Taylor, Vice Chair Fortune, members of the board, and Dr. Calverick. We have a full house tonight because I'm honored here to celebrate some of our amazing secondary students and all they've accomplished over the summer and some in the spring. So first, I would like to invite CHS's A D, Josh Grind, to the podium, as well as Dr. Connolly, our principal at CHS, to honor our student athletes from the spring season. He will share the student athletes and recognize the coaches that support our amazing Cavaliers. Thank you, Josh, for all that you do for our Cavaliers.
Good evening Chairman Taylor, Vice Chairman Fortune, Superintendent Calverick, Ms. Calverick, and the rest of the board. On behalf of the coaches and the student athletes at Caroline High School, we thank you for all your support. We obviously need a lot to improve things, but we're working on it. We're working on it really hard. So I want to start, I always start by thanking the coaches, and I want to do that first and foremost. These coaches work very hard, very hard for our kids, and they deserve this recognition. The first, we had a lot of good sports in the spring, and we had a lot of kids that won awards. So thank you for giving us this opportunity to recognize them. I'm gonna start with girls soccer. Our girls soccer team currently does not have a coach. We are looking for a new coach, so if anybody is interested, please give me, call me. I need you. We have, is it gonna be on the board?
Yes.
Oh, there we go. Girls soccer, the first one we have, and unfortunately for spring sports, a lot of our students were seniors and are now in college. But we have Caitlin Clock, who was second-team All-District, Grace Lynn Edwards, who was second-team All-District, and Maria Savasco, who is honorable mention All-District. Maria told me she was gonna try to make it, but I don't see her. Maria, if you're here, please come up. All right. Please give a hand for our girls soccer team. Boys soccer, I know Coach Prin is helping with football this year, but if you did make it over, come on up. But we had four of our soccer, boys soccer team make the, make honors of All-District. First was Brian Victorano, second-team All-District. Matthew Rule, second-team All-District. Jackson Gomez, second-team All-District. And Jordan Summers, second-team All-District. And I believe they were all seniors. Track and field, track and field had a pretty good year, as you can see up there on the board. Let me go through, is Coach, did Coach Harvey make it? Let me go through, is Coach, did Coach Harvey make it? All right. Kayla Vini. Kayla told me she was coming. All right, but Kayla was third in the region. She was third in 100 high hurdles, which was a school record. Fourth in the 300 intermediate hurdles. Desiree Davis, there's Kayla. Kayla's recovering from ACL surgery, which has put her on the sideline for her senior year, which absolutely breaks my heart. Desiree Davis. Desiree was sixth in the 100-meter high and fifth in the 300. Mackaya Herndon. Mackaya was fourth in the high jump, fifth in the long jump, and third in the triple jump. And at the state level, she was eighth in the high jump, seventh in the long jump, and fifth in the triple jump. Congratulations, Mackaya. Kiesha White was fifth in the shot put. Leland Hartley was eighth in the 400-meter dash. And for regional and for state, he was eighth in the 400-meter dash. And Leland Hartley has moved to Georgia, so he is not here. Arthur Duke.
I'm his dad, but he's at a golf match.
That's right, Arthur's coughing. He's in, he's in Culpeper right now, I forgot.
So you can come down and represent your son if you'd like.
Arthur was fourth in the 800-meter run, which was, and he set a school record this year or last year? All right, Tavari Terrell. Tavari was fifth in the high jump, fourth in the long jump in the region. CJ Johnson, sixth in the triple jump. Matthew Dudenheffer, eighth in pole vault. And Vlad Joeason was third in the shot in the region and eighth in the shot in state. And again, most of those are seniors. All right, baseball. All right, baseball. Coach Cooper, would you please come up? All right, our first, and I know he's here, is Alex Thomas. Alex was first-team All-District as shortstop and first-team All-Region as shortstop. And if you know anything about baseball, our region is pretty good. The rest are seniors and at college. Baylor Stork, first-team All-District outfielder and second-team All-District pitcher. First-team All-Region outfielder. And Austin Carter was second-team All-District pitcher, second-team All-District outfielder. And Michael Shot, second-team All-District, second baseman. And just as, on a side note, our baseball team did very well. Made it to the region tournament. In the first round, we beat King George, which is really good for us. We like beating King George. And that, that's going to, King George is going to come up again here in a second. All right, let's move on to softball. Our softball team was, what was our record? Seventeen and six. And we lost, out of those six games, we lost by a total of seven runs. So most of them were one, all six of them were one-loss games, and one was a two-loss game. So exciting, exciting, exciting season. Coach Trainum and Coach Tingan, thank you very much for all the hard work you put in. If you haven't heard, they are the regional champions. So our softball team lost a lot of one-run games, as I said, and most of them were district games, unfortunately. But, so we had a seventh, a seven seed in the region. And to win the championship as a seven seed is, means you were on the road for three out of the four games. So the first game, we hosted, actually with the weather, we had to host it at a different, a different field. But we beat Verina 18 to nothing. The second game, we went to Dinwiddie and won 6 to 1. The third game, we went to Patrick Henry and won 3 to 2 in eight innings. And the final championship game, we went to King George and beat them 3 to 2. In the state, and I've learned that I should schedule all my vacations for early in June because then we make a state run. So thank you, Dr. Connolly, for stepping in for the state game. We hosted. The estimate was several hundred people there at the, at the game, at least. So it was a great event. Unfortunately, we lost 1 to nothing. All of our good hits were hit right at somebody. But let's honor the softball student athletes who won awards this year. First, Jordan Wilkerson. Jordan was first-team All-District, first-team All-Region, and first-team All-State. Good news about Jordan is she's back again this year. Next, we have Jaden Tingan. Jaden Tingan was first-team All-District, first-team All-Region, and second-team All-State. And as I said earlier, we lost seven games, or six games by a total of seven runs. Jaden is our pitcher, very good. And luckily for us, she's back for her senior year. Next, we have Ava Anderson. Ava was first-team All-District, first-team All-Region, and second-team All-State. And the good news with Ava is she's back for two years. The next three we have are all seniors. Riley Chenault was second-team, oh, Riley is here. Second-team All-Region. Nia Howard. I believe Nia is already at school. Nia was second-team All-District and second-team All-Region. Jada Bolden. Jaden, I thought you were at college, too. Oh, second-team All-District. Can we get a picture of them? And then we're going to invite all the softball girls to please come down so we can get a picture. Would everyone, all the softball girls, please come down? Alyssa Bray was second-team All-District. Sorry, Alyssa, I missed that. Ms. McDowney was honorable mention All-District. Desi, I apologize.
Congratulations again to our regional softball champs. All right, well, if spring wasn't busy, then we moved into the summer, and our summer was full of FFA fun. So I'm going to ask our FFA sponsor from the high school, Kelsey Trainer, to come down and share the accomplishments of our high school FFA program. Following her, I'll ask Kenda Rogers, our CMS FFA sponsor, to share all the great work at the middle school for FFA. So I'll take it.
Good afternoon, board. I'm Ms. Kelsey Trainer, and I'm the advisor of the high school. This summer, we started off right after school, and we attended the FFA Virginia State Convention. We had students compete in various events, and our vet science team went on a tour of the Virginia Maryland College of Veterinary Medicine and had four students receive their state degree. So we accomplished a lot in a little bit of time, in four days. So starting off, this was probably the first time in almost 10-ish years, 10-plus years, that we had students receive, students receive their state degree. For those who are not familiar with what a state degree is, the highest degree that a state FFA Association can bestow upon its members representing a significant achievement in their FFA journey. It signifies a member's strong commitment to the organization and their local chapter, demonstrating outstanding leadership, academic success, and proficiencies in their supervised agricultural experience program. The state degree application takes about 24 hours to complete, and it's a really long process. And we had four seniors receive their state degree this year at convention. Will Travis Ernest and Hannah Mundy come up to the stage, please? And they were seniors last year, but these two are going to be applying for their American degree, which is the highest national honor in FFA that a student can receive. And so these two will apply for that next year. So. And then this year, we applied for our National Superior Chapter. And it's an application that goes over, and you, each chapter has to complete at least 15 activities, one for each of the five quality of standards for each division. And it takes about 40 days to complete. And we received our National Chapter, well, National Superior Chapter this year, and we got a gold rating in our public relations form. So that was for the whole chapter. So good job, kids. And then for competition teams, we had an Ag Mechanics team, food science, farm, business, and management team, and vet science team. And the two boys from Ag Mechanics, they weren't able to come tonight, but they finished 16th overall. Our senior farm and agribusiness team was Cameron Grant, Kobe Southworth, and Tyler Calhoun. And they finished seventh overall in the state. If you guys could come up to the stage. Yeah, okay. Our food science team was Abby Mayo, Caitlin Lepp, Hannah Mundy, and Jada Bland. And they finished 11th overall. And Hannah Mundy finished seventh overall high individual. And our vet science team was Bria Powell, Cade Hertzel, and Sam Moore. And then we have individuals that are part of the livestock showing team. They show livestock year-round. And they do this through both FFA and 4H. And through 4H and FFA, they're building valuable connections in the agricultural industry. The first year of the, the first show of the season is the Fredericksburg Area 4H and FFA Junior Livestock Show and Sale. And the show and sale is a joint show with over 12 counties involved. And students raise these animals and sell them at a premium sale Saturday night. Not only do they make more, but they have the opportunity to receive scholarships as well. From there, they attend the Caroline Agricultural Fair, Richmond County Fair, and then the Fredericksburg Agricultural Fair and various jackpot shows throughout the summer. These students raise these animals all year long, and many of them are financing these projects completely on their own. I will go through each, each student individually and read all of their accomplishments. Okay, starting off with Emmeline Shoup. She's not up here yet. But she showed in both the poultry and livestock show at the Fredericksburg Agricultural Fair Youth Weekend. She was fourth in the intermediate goat showmanship class and second in the breeding doe class for over 18 months. And in the poultry show, she was reserve champion continental open class, champion continental youth, youth LF champion, youth reserve champion showman, first in junior showmanship, open in youth, champion lightweight duck. Congratulations, Emmeline. And then Caitlin Lepp. Caitlin Lepp purchased two lambs this year, a breeding ewe from a sale in January from May Valley Club Lambs, and a weather from Hickory Ridge Farm. She sold her weather at the show and sale and kept her breeding ewe to continue her SAU project to start a small herd. At show and sale, she was third overall senior lamb showmanship and senior lamb showmanship, third in the lightweight market lamb class. At Caroline County Fair, she was fourth overall in senior lamb showmanship and third in the market lamb class. In Richmond County, Youth Weekend, she was grand champion in senior lamb showmanship, reserve champion commercial ewe. Open Weekend, she was reserve champion senior lamb showmanship and reserve champion commercial ewe. Fredericksburg, Youth Weekend, she was second in senior lamb showmanship and second in the commercial ewe class. And Open Weekend, she was third overall lamb showmanship and supreme champion breeding ewe. Cameron Grant is our next student. Cameron purchased three lambs this year, a breeding ewe and two weathers. And he also purchased a heifer from the VCCP Eastern Elite Sale. He sold his one weather at show and sale and then purchased a breeding ewe and another weather. He has shown his heifer, market, and breeding ewe throughout the summer and continues his SAU project and further his, and further his 4H projects and will be showing at the Virginia State Fair in October. At show and sale, he was fourth overall senior lamb showmanship, third overall senior beef showmanship, and reserve champion feeder heifer. At Caroline County, he was a reserve champion market lamb, third overall in senior lamb showmanship, grand champion market heifer, and second overall senior beef showmanship. At Richmond County, he was grand champion market lamb, grand champion senior beef showman, and third overall in senior lamb showmanship. Open Weekend, he was grand champion market lamb. At Fredericksburg, Youth Weekend, he was grand champion senior beef showman, supreme champion female for the junior show, grand champion market lamb, supreme champion market lamb. And the difference between grand champion and supreme is, it means it's the best at the whole entire show, like completely. So. Open Weekend, he was reserve champion commercial ewe, grand champion market heifer, grand champion lamb showman, and reserve supreme female of the beef show. And then Hannah Mundy. Hannah Mundy, she purchased two goats and, for her senior year. And she will also be continuing her projects and be at State Fair in October. And at show and sale, she was reserve champion senior goat showman, reserve champion market goat. At Caroline, she was grand champion market goat and grand champion senior goat showman. Richmond County Youth Weekend, she was grand champion senior goat and senior goat showmanship and reserve champion overall senior lamb showman. Open Weekend, she was reserve champion market goat. At Fredericksburg, she was reserve champion At Fredericksburg, she was Reserve Champion Lightweight Market Goat, Grand Champion Senior Goat Showman. Open Weekend, she was Grand Champion Senior Goat Showman, Overall Supreme Champion Goat Showman and Goat Showmanship, Grand Champion Lightweight Market Goat, and Supreme Overall Market Goat. Congratulations.
Good afternoon, y'all. I'm Ms. Kendall Rogers. I'm the Caroline Middle School FFA and Agriculture teacher. With me, I also have our new Agriculture and FFA advisor, Ms. Reynolds, joining us. She survived Week 1. She's still with us. Over the summer, we competed and attended many different events, but our biggest achievement over the summer was attending the 99th Annual Virginia FFA State Convention. We had 20 members attend and five full teams that competed in all of the middle school level contests. Our first contest that we competed in was the Middle School Plant Science Contest. As your name is called, please come forward. Ryan Matassa, Athena Weislich, Addison Felix, and Michaela Cox. This team placed 5th in the state, and our very own Michaela Cox took 2nd place overall High Individual. The next two contests that we competed in was Quiz Bowl as well as Food and Fiber. The Quiz Bowl event was given to us as something new in the past two years. It's like a Jeopardy! and Trivia for FFA history. Will Jalen Simon, Sarah Burt, Sloane Smith, and Emily Curtley please come forward? As a team, they placed 10th. And in the second wing, where they went against, after doing their initial setup, they did make it into the first round, but didn't make it to the second round. So still took a good try on that. Our other team was Food and Fiber. We have the following: Holly Davis, Lily Stover, Ellie Little, and Emma Williams. They took 6th place overall in the state. Our last two contests were the Middle School Ag Mechanics Contest and Small Animal Care. Gabe Larson, Cale Maloney, Harrison Saunders, and Will Matassa were our team for the junior or middle school Ag Mechanics Team. As a team, they took 8th overall in the state. And our final team was a Small Animal Care for middle school level. Please come forward as your name is called. We have Hunter Ryan, Colin Jensen, Kira Tieranen, and Carly Stover. That contest is one of the largest in the state, where we have over 40 different teams, and they placed 22nd, or 21st, sorry. Overall, it was a great trip for our members, and the contest went well. But Caroline Middle School FFA Chapter also walked the stage for a few times, and it felt like it kept happening. And we were super proud of our accomplishments. Caroline Middle School was recognized in five awards at the state level. We took Silver Rating for Scrapbook. We got our 100% Membership Recognition, a Silver Rating in Public Relations, National Superior Chapter with a Silver Rating, and overall Best Middle School Chapter in the Central Area. Thank you.
If they say summer is the time we get to relax, I don't know if our FFA students had that opportunity. They were busy, lots of great accomplishments. But we have one more set of accomplishments, and those are our students that attended Honors and Governor's School Programs this summer. So I would like to ask for Nikki Keiger to come to the podium.
Good evening. I first want to recognize our VDOE Summer Residential Governor's School Students. The VDOE Summer Residential Governor's School Program is a very prestigious honor for our students to have been selected. 100 students in Humanities and another 100 students in Visual and Performing Arts are selected across all of Virginia to attend a three-week session at Radford University, where they are taught many wonderful things in their craft by world-renowned professors. And so I'm just so proud of all of these students and their accomplishments. We had three students attend for Visual and Performing Arts, and this was the first year that we have had a student that I know of to attend for the Performing Arts. We had two for Visual Arts and one for Performing Arts this year. These students worked to develop projects, analyze social issues. And I would also be remiss if I did not thank Ms. Bolts, our amazing art teacher, for her partnership, her nurturing and support of our Visual and Performing Arts students. And she's just a joy for me to work with throughout the application process. So, at this time, I would like to recognize Jay Kelleher. So you'll have to come down off the stage for Visual Art. Carpenter Rowe for Visual Art. Ali Sears for Performing Art. And Zania Johnson for Humanities. We had about 25-plus students attend the Fredericksburg Regional Governor's School Programs. Rising 7th through 12th graders are eligible for this. It takes place at James Monroe High School. This STEM program has our students involved with learning our Rising 7th Wetlands. Rising 8th would be Mines, Minerals, and Caves. Chemistry does, they do, in high school, they do Chemistry and Exploring Engineering. And they also have a mentorship program. So, as part of the Board of Fredericksburg Regional Governor's School, we worked really hard this year. There were some financial constraints and things that they really had to work through and redevelop a few things. So it was really great for me to get to see all of these kids going after we worked hard through that. And I would like to say a big thank you to CCPS and your continued support always through that and being willing to support, even though we did not up that budget this year because some of our larger districts were not able to commit. But I just really appreciate our school, School Board Office and School Board being willing to support the needs there. And I know we'll continue to work through that this year, so thank you for that continued support. I'd also like to thank our Commonwealth's Attorney's Office. At the last minute, when another attorney's office declined our students because of some college students who were coming instead, our Commonwealth's Attorney Office in Caroline stepped up and took those students. So I just want to say I love the partnerships we have. And another thank you, too, to Dr. Hubbard as we dealt with working through some resources and that mentorship program. Thank you for that support, and I hope we can grow that partnership to help our mentor coordinator be able to find more placements and that Caroline can be more supportive. So thank you so much for that support. And I'd like to recognize the students who are here. If I do not call your name, because I checked off everyone who came in, if you came in after and I don't call your name, please come up. But I know that we have, for our mentorship program, we have Zania Johnson, so come on back up, Zania. And we have Garrett Wadsworth here. Toby Kirk. Alyssa Gray. Jackson George. And Alice Heath. Is there anyone I missed? Oh, I do have Zania's other... Yes, hers was the mentorship. You have a special one, Zania. Is Simon here? No, I don't think he's here. So I just want to thank those students for taking time to spend their summer doing something academic. I know it was fun. It was a great opportunity. And I am very proud of you for doing that. The last recognition for summer's Governor's School Programs is for the Hanover Regional Governor's School for Career and Technical Advancement. And this is under the CTE Wing at the high school that, as you know, is very robust. I don't believe either we're here, but I just want to make sure, if not Philip Bussary, I know is at some type of meet or match tonight. And then Liliana Junka Aragon is not here either. But congratulations to them on that prestigious accomplishment as well. Thank you so much.
Again, thank you very much. And I would also like to give a special thanks to the advisors, even though many have left. These programs would not be what they are without our advisors. We'd like to thank the students. We'd like to thank the parents. And we're going to just pause for a moment if other people want to leave. And then we'll get back to the agenda in a minute. In my haste of getting through the agenda, I skipped over the Board Committee Updates. So if Board members would like to reflect on committee updates, we can do that at this time, if you like. If not, we can combine it...
Mr. Chairman, I'm fine with doing it when we do our Board Comments later.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Then that takes us to recognition of summer hours with Dr. Neighbors. I'm sorry. Mr. Mudd.
Yes, we're celebrating the start of the year this evening. So, good evening, Chair Taylor, Vice Chair Fortune, members of the Board, Dr. Calverick. This evening, I will share back-to-school highlights for the '25-'26 school year. Our new year kicked off unofficially the week of July 28th as we welcomed our new educator class of 2025. This class consisted of both new to the profession and new to Caroline experienced educators all coming together to learn about CCPS and our Division Practices, proudly rebranded as CNET, Caroline New Education Training. This week was coordinated by our novice teacher support coach, Jamie Pruitt, and a team of staff who supported various aspects of the week-long introduction to Caroline County Public Schools. Working closely with the Curriculum and Instruction Department as well as exceptional education teams, the five-day orientation was a success for all new instructional employees. Highlights of the week included a focus on our strategic plan, Achieve 27, engagement of staff and team-building exercises, as well as reviewing the nuts and bolts of the work, which include, but are not limited to, the professional standards, safety and compliance processes, and an overview of the curriculum. Noteworthy this year was the investment of time and resources in professional learning as we engage with No-Nonsense Nurture, or NNN. NNN provides learning to educators that supports building relationships with students and learning how to establish firm boundaries with kindness and compassion, all while holding scholars to rigorous, high standards. This professional learning is delivered in a model that was involved active engagement, practicing, and using research-based four-step model that is intended to be implemented on day one of our staff working with students. And finally, this week would not have been possible without the valued support of our local partners, who served as both supports and sponsors of various aspects of our CNET Week. Together, as a community, we helped to welcome our new employees to CCPS. As we wrapped up our week with CNET, we were also gearing up for Teacher Work Week. This year, Teacher Work Week was kicked off with a traveling opening convocation that took place at our three elementary schools, our middle school, and our high school. The focus of this opening was to shine a light on our strategic plan while identifying important keys to success for the school year. The 30-minute opening led into a 60-minute professional learning experience for instructional staff related to key number one, teaching and learning, as we introduced the Virginia Department of Education's School Support and Performance Framework with staff and led them through an engagement activity where they were able to dig into the framework more using their school-specific data. This customized convocation experience allowed us to provide a necessary, school-specific welcome-back to all staff from their school sites. And while that was happening, our maintenance teams and contractors were busy finishing up various projects around the Division. This format provided the greatest flexibility possible for staff to work from their school site, reducing travel time between locations, all while projects were happening around us. While at convocation, all staff received a symbolic keychain, which I'm holding here, which included a key as well as a key card that included four keys to success for the school year, all designed to empower us as educators to unlock the full potential of our students. We provided a keychain for each of you with your materials tonight on the dais. We will add key cards throughout the school year representing various professional learning experiences that our staff have throughout the year. Day one of Teacher Work Week also included school-based welcome-back meetings led by school administration teams and provided staff with time to work in their classrooms and workspaces to get ready for the school year. Days two and three gave way to professional learning opportunities for those unable to take advantage of these opportunities over the summer, as well as some learning for our special educators and targeted staff taking time to learn about updated practices and compliance. Time was also dedicated on these days for teachers to work in classrooms and workspaces and to meet with team members. On August 7th, we held open house at all six of our school sites. As Dr. Calverick, Ms. Young, and I visited our schools together, each of these events could be described as high-energy, welcome-back events for our students and parents designed to usher in a terrific school year. The finishing touches on our schools took place on Friday, August 8th, as we prepared for students to return on Monday and Tuesday. Monday, August 11th, marked our second year in a row of starting our school year with Transition Day. On this day, our preschoolers, kindergartners, 6th graders, and 9th graders got a head start on the school year with a day dedicated just for them and their teachers and staff who work with them. This day marked another successful year, providing an opportunity for these students to be introduced to a new school building, new staff, and to learn new building and classroom routines and procedures in a quieter school environment that was all theirs just for the day. Tuesday, August 12th, was the big event. We welcomed back all of our students pre-K through 12. At this point, our preschoolers, kindergartners, 6th and 9th graders were becoming pros at what it meant to be back to school. Now with our buildings full of children, we all were welcomed. Students learned schedules, and students were introduced or reminded of school and classroom routines and procedures. It was most certainly a great day. And finally, as I referenced earlier, keys to success. These keys aligned with our theme for the year, Unlocking the Keys to Success. As we begin another school year, these four keys to success, teaching and learning, relationships, health and safety, and talent management, are important reminders of our... health and safety, and talent management, are important reminders of our intense focus on what is important to us here in Caroline, and most importantly, what is important for the success and achievement of our students. 25-26 has gotten off on great footing and is going to be a great year. To help us celebrate our back-to-school highlights, we have a school opening video to share with you this evening. Hope you enjoyed our back-to-school video, and as I mentioned, it's going to be a great year. Thank you.
Very good, sir. Thank you. All right, that takes us to information, 25-26 staffing. Ms. Tucker.
Good evening, Chair Taylor, Vice Chair Fortune, members of the board, and Dr. Calverick. This evening, I will provide you with an update on the hiring of certified staff for the 25-26 school year. I will share an update on our new teachers, remaining vacancies by each building, and next steps to fill the remaining vacancies. First, I will share our highlights of our new staff. As of mid-August, Caroline County Public Schools has hired 66 new licensed or eligible-for-licensure teachers for the 25-26 school year. Of these hires, 29 were recruited through AppleTrack, 10 were internal promotions, including long-term subs who completed their degrees, and paraprofessionals with bachelor's degrees who are pursuing licensure through ITeach. Four came through our Pathways to Teaching program, nine were hired from Indeed, four from our J1 Visa Teacher Partnership with Greenheart, four were recruited through our online platform Handshake, one is a returning CCPS teacher, four were referred by employees, and one came through a college referral. These hires reflect the success of our multi-pronged recruitment strategy, which includes leveraging online platforms, cultivating internal talent, building partnerships with teacher preparation programs, and utilizing referrals. This approach has allowed us to fill critical vacancies, increase diversity, and strengthen our instructional team for the year ahead. Among our 66 new teachers for the 25-26 school year, 27 are fully licensed and 39 are eligible for licensure. Together, this talented group brings a combined 389 years of teaching experience to Caroline County Public Schools. Our new hires also bring impressive academic credentials, including 18 with master's degrees and one with a doctorate. This combination of experience, advanced education, and fresh perspectives positions us well to support student achievement in the coming year. Our new team reflects a rich diversity, with 10% Asian, 28% Black, 3% Hispanic, and 56% white educators joining our classrooms. By gender, 27% are male and 72% are female, each bringing unique skills, experiences, and perspectives. This vibrant mix of talent strengthens our schools and enriches the learning experience for all of our students. Next, I will provide you with an update on our vacancies. We continue to focus our recruitment efforts on filling several key positions across the division. At Caroline High School, we're seeking a special education teacher, which hopefully we're hiring tomorrow, a CTE teacher, and an exceptional education specialist. Caroline Middle School has openings for a Director of Counseling and an exceptional education specialist. Bowling Green is in need of two school counselors and one special education teacher. Also, I think we have an offer going out for that one. While Lewis &amp; Clark is seeking a BSP teacher and an exceptional education specialist. Madison has one vacancy for a fourth-grade teacher. These roles remain a top priority as we work to ensure every school is fully staffed to meet the academic and social-emotional needs of our students. To fill these remaining vacancies, we have expanded our outreach to attract top talent by increasing our social media presence, actively updating our Handshake platform, and posting more frequently on Indeed. We've also strengthened our connections and interactions with college programs. These targeted efforts give us confidence that we will successfully fill our remaining vacancies. And I will take any questions you may have at this time.
Do the board members have questions at this time?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
First of all, I'd like to compliment you on, I think the thing that I'm most impressed with is the years of experience, because we've set in closed session and we've approved the new hires, and we've looked at that, and I'm always impressed by, I mean, we'll take step zeros, you know, coming in, but we're getting a lot of people who have lots of experience in front of a classroom. Being a teaching veteran myself, I know it's a struggle with classroom management sometimes. You sit in the class, and they'll teach you how to get 30 kids and make them study and all that stuff, and it's a different story the first day, so having that experience is wonderful. I'm also impressed with the lack of vacancies compared to years past. Do you happen to know what our vacancy percentage is overall? Because it looks like it's going to be, like, we have a lot of our positions filled, right?
Yeah, right around 96%.
That's amazing. That's amazing. Great. Thank you.
Other board members?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
Let me also reinforce the compliment, because I do recall this time last year, and there were some challenges. But this year, very confident, and very impressed with the hard work that you and your team have been able to pull off with the support of our Schoolhouse administrators and whatnot. I do have one question. Provisional licensure. What is our total number now of provisional license?
I will have to get back to you on that.
All right. So the 39 eligible, are they provisional? Is that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes, I thought you were asking for total.
Yes, I am. I just wanted to make sure I was interpreting that as well.
Those 39 will be eligible.
Okay, great. Well done again. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks again.
Mr. Chair, I just want to echo the kudos to Ms. Tucker and your team. It shows that a multi-pronged and intentional approach to recruiting will in fact yield not only the best and the brightest, but also a diverse workforce and faculty that will, in the long run, benefit our entire school division. And so, once again, thank you for that intentional approach to recruiting.
Thank you.
And again, as has been said, thank you very much for job well done. All right, that takes us to our phone policy. Mr. Wick.
Good evening, Chair Mr. Taylor, Vice Chair Mr. Fortune, members of the board, and Dr. Calverick. Last school year, you guys, or we passed, I guess, you guys passed a comprehensive cell phone policy, but the VSBA just recently came out with an official policy, because previously it was based on the executive order. Now it's an official policy. So our policy is very comprehensive. So based on what the VSBA put out a few weeks ago, we just have to change a couple things, a few additions in there. One is the definition of smart device, which you can see that in board docs. Another one is just a statement saying that the superintendent approved age-appropriate, you know, limitations, and we have those in there as well. And the other addition is that students cannot be suspended solely for possessing a cell phone, but if it's in use with a combination of something else like bullying, or harassment, or something like that, then we can follow our code of conduct. So those three minor additions have been added.
Okay. Do board members have questions regarding those additions? The only thing that I would ask is, do we need to revote on this because of the additions? Or how does that work?
I would say yes, because we are changing the policy, just editing it with these three minor additions, but the rest of the policy is still in effect.
Okay, so would this then be an action item?
Good question. I would say yes.
Mr. Chairman, I move for approval of the modified cell phone policy.
Point of clarification. I have no problems with proceeding with this, but it would be nice to see what it is that we're about to approve.
It is in your board docs. There is a copy in there.
And the specific changes are in red, I believe.
Thank you. I'm good.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Smooth and popular second. We can call for the vote.
Point of order. Can we repeat the motion?
Okay, it is to approve the cell phone policy with the additions.
Thank you.
You're welcome. All right, please call for the vote.
Mrs. Sears?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mr. Fortune?
Aye.
Dr. Hubbard?
Aye.
Dr. Robinswell?
Aye.
Mr. Taylor?
Aye, and the motion carries. Thank you, sir. Continue?
Good evening again, Chair Mr. Taylor, Vice Chair Mr. Fortune, members of the board, and Dr. Calverick. This is an information item regarding crisis plans. We are required to update these annually, and for security reasons, the crisis plans are not available in public section of board docs, but they are in the administrative portion of board docs, and these have been updated by the safety coordinators in each school according to Department of Criminal Justice guidelines. In addition, they have been shared, they will be shared, actually, once you guys see them here tonight, with the county chief law enforcement officer at the sheriff's department, the fire chief, the chief emergency medical services officer, and the emergency management officer per state requirements. This is just information for you guys to see that the crisis plans have been updated.
Okay. Any questions regarding the crisis plan? Does that require a vote as well?
It does not.
Okay. Okay, well, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
All right, I believe this takes us to modular classrooms with Mr. Caldwell.
Good evening, Chair Taylor, Vice Chair Fortune, members of the board, and Dr. Calverick. Tonight, I'm pleased to give you an update on the modular classrooms at Bowling Green Elementary School. As a recap for June, the units were procured on June 2nd, and in the month of June, we conducted site work as far as getting the plans together, getting everything approved. As we moved into July, we worked with REC in the county to get everything as far as infrastructure started to be installed, as far as getting the permit in hand, and everything straight with REC. After that July board meeting, the modular classrooms were delivered on July 30th. July 31st, we started the setup of the modular units. August 3rd, the setup of the modular units was completed by Wilmont's vendor. August 4th through the 12th, we installed all the infrastructure and completed connections to the modular units. August 7th, we brought in the whiteboards and installed the ramps. Fencing installation started on August 9th. August 11th, we were able to come up with a plan to open up the playgrounds for the use of the students to keep them out of danger for the construction that was actually going on, and we were very successful in letting them have recess outside. On August 13th and 14th, the fire alarm and intercom was installed, was complete, and the factory team had showed up on August 13th to do some punch-out items that were pointed out by the engineer once it left the factory. We've ordered cubbies and bookcases on August 13th. And then also, we had turned the power on to the units on August 13th and did our HVAC electrical plumbing startups. On our next step, we did have a foundation inspection on the 14th. We are awaiting some information from Wilmont's engineer for some clarifications for the county building official. We have our standard inspections, which we had three of them today, that have passed, so everything else in the inspection line, we are looking at all the finals on electrical plumbing and mechanical, final on fire alarm, which will be conducted on Thursday, and also our occupancy permit. We do have a re-inspection on foundation once that paperwork is in hand. We're hoping to have all inspections called in for Thursday, and then have a, we're hoping for the certificate of occupancy sometime on Thursday with those inspections, if we receive the paperwork from Wilmont's engineer tomorrow. We also have a couple pieces of the ramp that are going to be showing up that are additional pieces that they miscalculated on that are supposed to show up tomorrow or Wednesday. Finding and cleaning is underway. Our lead custodian, Ms. Childs, was in there today, and custodians were in there waxing this evening. Tentatively, we are projecting for a possible teacher move-in on August 22nd. That is tentative, and I will have more answers by the close of business tomorrow on that. Thank you for your time and attention. This time, I'd address any questions, comments, or concerns.
Board members have questions?
May I? Please. First of all, let me commend you on the work that has been done over the course of the summer. This has been a Herculean effort, and you have risen to the occasion, so I commend you for that. A question, I guess maybe for both you and Marcia. Have we taken into consideration, budget-wise, the uptake, however slight it may be, in utilities with regards to these new facilities? And are we budgeted, or do we need to address any budgetary issues with regards of operations of those facilities, of the new facilities?
I have not budgeted anything as far as power. I have not budgeted anything as far as power goes. I will turn to Marsha to see if she's worked on that. She said she'll have to incorporate that into the budget as, as we're monitoring.
Okay, other questions? If not, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Alright, that takes us to revenues and expenditures.
Good evening Chair Taylor, Vice Chair Fortune, members of the board, Dr. Calverick. This evening I'll be presenting the July F Y twenty-six financials. Operating revenues for July were 2.4 million, which represents 3.7% of our 65.3 million operating appropriation. Special fund revenues for July totaled $37,000, 0.46% of our 8 million special funds appropriation. In total, revenues for all funds in July were 2.4 million, represent 3.3% of our combined annual budget. Turning to expenditures, operating, operating expenditures for July were 2.9 million, or 4.55% of the annual operating budget. Special fund expenditures totaled 353,000, or 4.10%. Total expenditures for all funds in July came to 3.3 million, which represents 4.5% of the total F Y twenty-six budget. This time, I'd be happy to take any questions from the board regarding the July F Y twenty-six financial report.
May I? Thank you for the chat that we had earlier with regards to some of the large ticket, I'm looking at the check registry that you've provided for us. First of all, I appreciate you providing that. Two questions, I guess, the first one is on the large tickets, items, i.e. 10 grand and above. For example, let's take Wex Bank, you know, that's 23 grand. What, what, what is that for? I know it's a good-
That's for our fuel card program.
Yep.
And you're referring to the check registers now, correct?
Yes, check register, yes. Transportation, that's what I thought it was. Now, I'm not going to go through all of it, we kind of talked about it, but the point that I'm asking is because part of my responsibility, and my colleague's responsibility, is money. So, I just want to make sure, this is a, a public item, right?
Sure.
So, when some industrious individual starts looking and asking questions, I like to make sure that I understand exactly what it is, so I can answer intelligently. I did notice, though, that quite a few of these, the big-ticket item companies, are outside of the Commonwealth of Virginia. Do, for example, E A I is in New Jersey, Wex is in Portland, Akita Box is in Madison, Status Solutions is in Westerville, Ohio, and then, of course, U P N, which is now Segra, is in North Carolina. So, that's revenue that's going out, that's tax that's going out. Are we, I guess, in our cost analysis, do we look for Virginia-based vendors to do some of this work, or is it just outside the norm?
So, first, I would say, a lot of the big-ticket items in the check registers are Virginia-based.
Okay.
So, Power School was like 186 grand. We do a lot of work with Supply Room, I think there was a check register, there was a check for 65 grand, they're local. R R M M, local. V S B A was 20 grand. Centennial is local, Virginia. The electric bill, obviously, local.
Yeah.
So, the majority of the big-ticket items are local, Virginia-based. We do file procurement laws, we have several policies that have to do with purchasing, small purchasing, large purchasing, informal bid process, formal bid process. I've not really done an analysis in the short time I've been here about in-state versus out-of-state. Ms. Stevens has jumped to the call here, so maybe she can add a little bit more than I could.
And I don't expect us to go into the weeds too far, because I'm just asking a general question, you know, are we looking to Virginia-based companies whenever possible? Those are tax revenues that come back to the Commonwealth, which we somehow can get through those tax revenues.
Certainly. So, a lot of those large items that you were mentioning, U P N, that is based on a bid process, that is our internet service connection. So, a lot of times, you'll see the invoices going out-of-state for, especially like Wex. Wex is the credit company, or the financing company, for our transportation fuel, which we're actually getting ready to change, we're in the process, we sign contracts changing that. But, all the fuel was purchased within Caroline, unless our buses are off-site, so they are still getting the sales within Caroline, however, the check is being managed going out by the financial company. We do follow Virginia procurement law, so we will follow that within any of our large purchases. Items over $200,000 have to go out for bid, or follow on a cooperative purchase. Some of the other ones you named are software companies.
Yep.
And when you're dealing with software companies-
Deal with them all the time.
Yep, absolutely. So, they're not necessarily Virginia-based at all times, but we do look at the V I contracts based with the state.
Great, thank you.
Board members have other questions regarding the revenues? Okay, seeing none as presented, call for the vote.
Dr. Rollins Fells?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Hubbard?
Aye.
Mr. Fortune?
Aye.
Mrs. Sears?
Aye.
Mr. Taylor?
Aye, and the consent agenda stands approved as presented. That takes us to the citizen comment section of our meeting. The Caroline County School Board welcomes public comment during the regular meeting and public hearings. Speakers may address an item on the board meeting agenda, or an item not on the agenda during this time. All comments should address a matter related to the Caroline County Public Schools. Each speaker may speak up to three minutes. Once you see the red light on the traffic light positioned in front of the clerk, please make your last statement. The school board chair is responsible for recognizing all speakers, for maintaining proper order, and for adhering to the time limits stated above. The chair is authorized to stop and/or have removed any speaker who uses language that is obscene, constitutes fighting words, true threats, or solicitation to commit crimes, and incites intimate, lawless action. Moreover, the chair may stop or have removed any person who disrupts the orderly function of the meeting by making loud, boisterous, or threatening comments. Once you come to the lectern, if you have not signed in with the clerk, please complete the appearance request form. State your name and your district. At this time, the clerk will call those who have signed up prior to the meeting. Hearing none, are there any citizens in the audience that would like to make comments at this time? Are there any citizens in the auditor, in the auditorium who would like to make comments at this time? Finally, are there any citizens in the audience who would like to make a comment at this time? Seeing no one with the intention to speak, I will declare the citizen comment portion That takes us to action items. Action C C P S and V S B A policies, Mr. Muller.
Good evening Chair Taylor, Vice Chair Fortune, members of the school board. I'm bringing forward to you policies reviewed at the July meeting for approval. The Virginia School Board Association provides updates in February and May of each year that are based on changes in law and regulations. In addition, a few policies are revised for editorial reasons or to correct technical errors. In the following, in this presentation that I did in July, we reviewed policies that were being currently revised and considered by Caroline County Public Schools. And in that last month's presentation, we provided a portion of the policies for first read, and tonight, I'm asking for adoption of these revised policies.
Board members have questions or concerns about the policies?
Mr. Chairman, I move for approval of the policies as presented.
Second?
It's been moved in properly, second, that we would approve the policies as presented. Mr. Clerk, would you call for the vote?
Mrs. Sears?
Aye.
Mr. Fortune?
Aye.
Dr. Hubbard?
Aye.
Dr. Rollins Fells?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mr. Taylor?
Aye, and it stands approved.
Thank you.
Thank you. That takes us to approved, waived, first read, Dr. Nevers.
Good evening Chairman Taylor, Vice Chair Fortune, Superintendent Dr. Calverick, and members of the school board. Rachel Wheeler and I are here tonight to present name changes and new courses to propose for the school year 2526 Program of Studies. Each name change or new course will be explained to better understand this request as the school year has started and the request to waive this first read. These courses have been reviewed with the high school team and the counseling department. Most importantly, these courses support our Chief 2027 Strategic Plan, and will help our students be three E ready. Ms. Wheeler?
Thank you, Dr. Nevers. We are proposing two course name changes for you this evening. These courses will provide additional opportunities for our students to have four full years in core area and earn an advanced diploma, as well as meet graduation requirements for college and career readiness. This gives the opportunity for additional A P courses and internship opportunities. The first one you will see is A P Studio Art, is no longer an identified course with the College Board. We have had A P Studio Art as a previous course in the Program of Studies, and we have several students that are ready for more rigor in this area. Further, we have a teacher endorsed and trained to teach this class, so we are proposing to offer A P two-D art and design, A P three-D art and design, and A P drawing. These would be students that are currently in years three or fi, or, ooh, three or four of art, but show the opportunity and ability to prepare a portfolio to be able to submit to College Board. So, these three classes honor the A P Studio Art, but give the specifications for the, what's currently listed for College Board. Secondly, Education for Employment One is the new course name per the V D O E for the courses we currently have titled M C D and Apprenticeship. The sched code remains the same for this course, we just need to update the name to be in compliance.
Thank you very much.
We are also proposing two new courses. One is Jobs for Virginia grads. Job for Virginia grads is a program designed to help students, particularly those facing barriers, transition from school to work, and build skills for career success. The program is based on Jobs for American grads, J A G, the national model, which focuses on graduation, job placement, job retention, and career sustainability. It utilizes a unique combination of in-school and out-of-school services, including employability skills, training, career planning, job-seeking, and retention skills, and personal development. This is a late add, as we were just awarded the grant in June, to offer the course, which covers the cost of the teacher to teach the extra course, as well as some of the other expenses with this program. The second new course is Dual Enrollment Humanities 202, which is Modern Humanities, which examines the values and expression of ideas of selected Western and non-Western cultures from the 1300s until the 1900s, integrating the visual arts, literature, religion, music, and philosophy with the context of history. We're using this course as the second semester of our current course, D E Early Humanities 201, instead of the D E Psychology course. This allows our students to have a consistent teacher here in the building, and a C C P S teacher, instead of the past hybrid model of a virtual teacher at times and weekly in-person. We also offer psychology as our regular general studies program, so this adds a diversified program for our students. And again, we are requesting this waive of the first read in order to have these courses updated for our current students in school year 25, 20, 2526. What questions may you have?
Do board members have questions regarding the addition of these courses?
I do have a question. So, are you saying that if we add the students who are here now, could change a schedule to get in to those classes, or no, it's for next?
So, for the, for the courses, the new courses, let me go back, excuse me for a second, these students are in a placeholder for the J V G program. So, we have identified the students that would be at risk, that are the students that would be selected in alignment with the grant. We have a current teacher to teach that, and that teacher has that extra course. For the D E Humanities, these are students that are already in first semester, D E 201, so they're already in a course, and then they will contend, continue into D E 202 second semester. I hope that answers your question.
Okay. Any other questions?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, if you don't mind. Thank you for the information, and you have to excuse my ignorance on this, because I teach A P classes, but in regards to the A P two-D art and design, A P three-D art and design, and A P drawing, is there anything that we need to do through the College Board to get approval to teach those? Because I know that the tests themselves are pretty much open to anybody who wants to take them, but do we need special permission, or have to have somebody that has a master's degree, or something to teach them?
Options for our students, and it doesn't have us have to get an options for our students, and it doesn't have us have to get another staff member, because we have a staff member to do that. She'll need to submit her syllabus to the College Board.
Right. Okay, thank you. That concludes my questions, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Any other questions? Dr. Hubbard, did you, did you have a question? I saw you move, I didn't know if you-
He was moving too.
Okay, okay, again, thank you very much. Did, I'm sorry, did you?
No, because he needed a motion. He was moving too.
Oh, yeah.
Everyone's stopping.
I know, I was going to get to the motion. I was just going to say that the addition of these courses enhances our curriculum, and that's only a good thing, so, thank you very much. So, now, we will entertain a motion to approve the addition of these courses.
Mr. Chairman, I move for a waive of first read and approval of the new courses as presented.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Alright, because we moved in properly, second, that we would waive the first reading and add these courses to our curriculum. Ms. Clerk, would you call for the vote?
Dr. Rollins Fells?
Aye.
Dr. Hubbard?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mr. Fortune?
Aye.
Mrs. Sears?
Aye.
Mr. Taylor?
Aye, and the motion carries. That takes us to our next agenda item, which is the nomination for the Virginia School Board Association Advocate for Education Submission. This, I think, is just an excellent idea. The fact that we have someone, I believe, that we want to nominate for this position. The 2025 Virginia School Board Association Advocates for Education Award. The V S B A invites the board to nominate a school board member to the Annual Advocate of Education Award. This award will be presented at the V S B A Annual Convention in November. The nominee must demonstrate significant and outstanding leadership, commitment, and contributions to public education that have had an impact on leadership, commitment, contributions to public education, I'm sorry, that have had an impact on the region and the Commonwealth. Nominees must show involvement in local, state, and federal advocacy on behalf of their division, V S B A, and public education. Each local school board may submit one named nomination for consideration. The nomination must be approved unanimously by the school board. I would like to open the floor for a nomination.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to nominate Mr. Sean Kelly without reservation, and hope that that is accepted unanimously by the board.
Okay. Do we need a second to the nomination? Is that how that works, or do we just call for the vote?
I second.
Okay. Alright, it's been moved in properly, second, or nominated for Mr. Sean Kelly to be the person for the Advocate for the Education Award. Ms. Clerk, would you call for the vote?
Mrs. Sears?
Aye.
Mr. Fortune?
Aye.
Dr. Hubbard?
Aye.
Mr. Taylor?
Obstain, no, I'm just joking, aye.
Dr. Rollins Fells?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Well, I can't abstain, can I? Because it has to be unanimous, so aye.
Yes, ma'am. It's been moved in properly, second, by unanimous vote, that Mr. Kelly would be the nominee for the Advocate for Education Award. And, and seriously, I, I believe he is a- he is a fine candidate. I'm never gonna say another good thing about him, so I wanna go ahead and pour it on thick this time. But thank you for what you do, Shawn. Okay, all right. Now since I was playing, I lost my place. That takes us to the Virginia, uh, BGES MOU action next step. Mr. LaDell Fortune.
Uh, thank you, um, thank you, Mr. Chair. During our monthly agenda meeting with Superintendent Calverick, Chair Taylor and I, along with Superintendent Calverick, decided that it was necessary to include an agenda item educating the community on the next steps in the process of the Bowling Green Elementary School expansion. As members of this board are aware, our board agreed unanimously to expand Bowling Green Elementary School on condition that a mutually agreed memorandum of understanding, or MOU, outlining the roles and responsibilities of both boards during this process be executed by both boards. So the purpose of this presentation tonight is to share with the community the actions we have taken since the above referenced vote, to include, one, the board of supervisors' response to our request to engage in this effort, two, a brief walkthrough of our board's proposes, proposed changes to the original MOU that we received from the board of supervisors, and three, a discussion of possible next steps leading to a decision on how to proceed. So as the next slide indicates, on July twenty-ninth, Chair Taylor sent a letter to the board of supervisors, Chair Long, and County Administrator Cully requesting a joint meeting with the board of supervisors to discuss the Bowling Green Elementary School MOU, and to schedule a joint retreat with the board of supervisors in an effort to improve the working relationship between both boards for the benefits of our, benefit of our students, our school staff, and the entire county. The board of supervisors responded to our request for a joint meeting and a joint retreat by letter dated August fifth, declining our request and informing us that their board's preference is to send the MOU to our respective attorneys for review and discussion, to determine if a consensus can be reached on terms of said MOU. Board members in your packet, you do have a copy of the redlined MOU, but once again, for the benefit of the community, I want to briefly walk through the current MOU, uh, walk through the MOU that we are proffering to our colleagues on the board of supervisors. Section one of the proposed MOU now reads, the purpose of this MOU is to establish the framework for the funding and construction of two to six classrooms and a gym at Bowling Green Elementary School. Moving on to section two, constitutional authority from the Virginia Constitution. In the original MOU that we received, there was a summary of Article seven, I'm sorry, Article eight, section seven, but we, as a board, decided that we wanted the entire text of that particular article to be included in section two of the MOU. And you can see for yourselves the entire text of that article in section. Also in section two, we are requesting the entire code section that was referenced in the original MOU, as well as, excuse me, the entire code section of Virginia Code fifteen point two, eighteen hundred point one. We also requested in that section the elimination of Virginia Code, uh, section fifteen point two dash nine hundred at Secoada, the board of supervisors' general powers to manage county affairs, including capital improvements for the school. Moving on to section three, the roles and responsibilities of the board of supervisors, we decided to keep the funding language, but to add the following acknowledgement. The board of supervisors acknowledges that the proposed classroom expansion at BGES is a temporary solution and not a substitute for the construction of a new middle school. The board of supervisors hereby makes this commitment to the fund, to fund the design and construction of a new elementary school with planning to begin no later than fiscal year twenty-seven, and construction to commence by fiscal year twenty-eighth, ensuring readiness for the projected overcrowding outlined in the short-term facility plan or shortly thereafter. The board of supervisors further acknowledges that further temporary expansions at an others, at any, at an other school within the county is not a viable short-term or long-term option to address the education needs of the students in the county. We've also requested that sections three, four, and five of section three be stricken. Next, in section three, roles and responsibilities, we wanted to eliminate the language of cooperation, but keep the following: access granted to BGES property as necessary for construction activities, supervision of use upon completion, except full control, supervision, and operation of facilities in courts with Article eight, section seven of Virginia Constitution, and Virginia Code, section twenty-two point one dash seventy-nine three, and twenty-two point one dash one twenty-five. As you could see, also in section three, roles and responsibilities, we added the, the whole section that discusses cooperation, procurement, and coordination of efforts. Section four discusses operational control, which states that at all times the school board shall retain ownership and operational control of BGES upon completion of the facilities and issuance of all necessary occupancy permits. The school board shall assume and exercise its constitutional and statutory authority for the use, operation, maintenance, and educational programming in the facilities. The next section, with the added title of dispute resolution, states that any disputes arising under this MOU shall be resolved through good faith negotiations between the parties. We also requested a term and termination section to be added that states that this MOU shall become effective upon signatures, upon, I'm sorry, upon signature by both parties, and shall remain in effect until completion of the facilities and formal transfer of operational control unless otherwise amended in writing and formally approved by both parties. Section seven has no changes, and section eight, we add the title of miscellaneous. So once again, that was a brief overview of the redlined MOU that we all agreed upon and put forth to, that we want to put forth to the board of supervisors for consideration. We are at a point now with, that we do need to, as a board, make a decision as how to proceed with this matter. Before you, on the last slide, there are two recommendations for your consideration. The first recommendation is to send the CCPS revised MOU to the board of supervisors attorney, and have the board of supervisors attorney and our, and the CCPS attorney draft one MOU that achieves collaborative board consensus, with then each board considering adoption of the MOU at their individual board meetings. The second recommendation states that we send the CCPS revised MOU to the board of supervisors attorney, that the CCPS and the board of supervisors attorney draft one MOU that achieves collaborative board consensus, but with the added steps of both boards establishing a joint meeting to review and collectively adopt the MOU. And while at that joint meeting, we can have a discussion regarding the updates to the BGES trailer project, in addition to discussing next steps for the Lewis and Clark Elementary School trailers and the BGES renovation. So, Mr. Chair, before opening up the discussion to the board, is there any other, any comments that you would like to make?
The, first of all, I would like to thank you, Mr. Vice Chair, for your explanation of the MOU and discussion of the changes. We want to do what's best for children, and we, as a board, are responsible to the children of Caroline County and to the parents, to make sure that we initiate whatever we can to make Caroline continue to be the great educational system that it is. So, having said that, we have, as I understand it, two options that we are looking at, and we would then need to discuss maybe those options and try and determine which option we accept, and then we would send that to the board of supervisors and get their reaction. In closing, I would say, all of the persons or groups who have involvement with the schools and education in the county, I think, need to be at a table where we can talk about what our recommendations are, and explain if there are questions, and talk about the impacts. But of course, we have requested the board of supervisors to meet with us, and we haven't been successful in having that happen. So at this point, hopefully, we can send this information to them, whichever one we choose, and we can get the input that we need, and we can determine what is best, the best method to go forward, and we can move on from there. So I will then open it up to the rest of the board. If you have comments, or questions, or concerns, we can talk about it at this time.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
First of all, thank you, Mr. Fortune, for helping us navigate the legal jargon that any MOU provides and offers. You know, the legal expertise is appreciated. I guess my question is, considering the board of supervisors' preference for having the attorneys resolve the MOU language, the subject matter experts, before any joint meeting, I'm not quite sure how we, as a board, justify to continue to push for a joint meeting first, especially when they have already responded back to us that a quorum was not achievable on the previous proposed dates, or until the lawyers had the opportunity to work through the, the legal jargon of, of the MOU. Is our approach a strategic move to address the potential legal disagreements, or in a, in a public forum rather than in a private legal discussion? I think it would be beneficial if we let the lawyers work out the language, and then present it back to each respective board for us, and then after that, if there is a need for a, a joint meeting, then by all means, we can certainly proceed with that.
If I could make a point of clarification, the second bullet noted in recommendation one and recommendation two does exactly that, Dr. Hubbard. It does ultimately send our redlined MOU to the board of supervisors attorney, and their MOU to our attorney, of course, which she has already seen, and the two of them would work together in recommendation one and recommendation two. The difference is where the line is noted, and that is simply that we either go our separate ways and adopt at individual meetings, once we receive it back from attorneys, or at the point in recommendation two, where the attorneys have already done their work to achieve one document, the boards come together and talk about that document, and in a good faith display of collaboration, adopt it in a joint meeting. And I, I will share that there was a question posed to me about the ability to make a motion and adopt or vote on a motion in work session or a joint work session, board meeting, and there is nothing prohibiting that from occurring on either board, in either sets of bylaws and/or the Constitution or Code of Virginia.
As a follow-up, if I may, so I agree with, and understand exactly the points that you've just made, Dr. Calverick. I guess my question is, if we have, if our lawyers have been able to reach an agreement, and they have worked through the legal jargon to our sat, to both board satisfaction, that should be the first step. And then, both boards would then approve what their lawyers have presented back as in an agreement, and then we should be able to move forward without necessarily having to have a joint meeting to get the memorandum, the legal memorandum of agreement specifications outlined.
Again, point of clarification, that is not the intent of a joint meeting. As stated, boards establish a joint meeting to review and collectively adopt the MOU, which had previously achieved consensus between the attorneys. It then also affords the schools and the supervisors the opportunity to update the supervisors on the Bowling Green Trailer Project, as well as talk about next steps for renovation, both of which are very pressing matters that require collaboration.
I couldn't agree with you more, but the board is, the board of supervisors has clearly stated that they are not going to meet, because they don't have a quorum, until we, our lawyers have worked out the jargon. So is it safe to say that we will work through, let the lawyers work through the legal jargon, and then proceed after that?
That is indeed what recommendation one and two both say.
So basically, the joint meeting wouldn't occur until after the lawyers have already met and, and developed an MOU that they, that they feel in their negotiation that both boards would, would approve. So the, the first option, only difference in the second option in that either either board adopts what's already been worked out individually, or both boards collectively adopt what has been worked out by the, by the attorneys, with the added benefit of a fuller discussion of the Bowling Green Expansion Project and what's on the horizon at Lewis and Clark.
Do other board members have concerns or questions?
Well, first of all, Mr. Chairman, thank you for the, and Vice Chairman, for the time and effort you guys have put into this. Mr. Taylor likes to call me a lot when I'm driving around with my kids, or I'm cooking dinner, which makes it really difficult to not burn stuff sometimes, but we always get sidetracked and go in-depth with this. And I, looking this over, it looks like option, the only difference between really option one and option two to me, is that after the lawyers talk, we would just agree, we are saying that we would prefer to establish a joint meeting to review the MOU after it's all done, adopt it, and then we can get an update together. adopt it, and then we can get an update together. And then, because that, then, that's the old news, is the MOU, then what's the next step? And that, I think, is what is in the best course of everybody, is having a public meeting with the joint boards to discuss how we're going to spend the taxpayers' dollars. Because this, this is, this is dragging on. I mean, this has taken entirely too long to get done, in my opinion. And Option Two, again, there's, the only difference is we're just going to talk about what's the next step after adoption of the MOU. So, I would be in favor of moving forward with Option Two.
Other board members?
I have to agree with my colleague, Mr. Kelly. I think that after we do, our lawyers do the lawyer talk and come up with an MOU that we both, both boards agree on, coming together is the best thing. We need to collaborate on what we're doing next and we need to do that in a more timely fashion. So, I am also thinking Option Two is the better option.
Mr. Chairman.
Well, did I just look, I think, were you gonna, okay.
If the, if the Board of Supervisors has stated on numerous occasions that they are not going to meet in joint session, are we going to continue to drag this through as opposed to just addressing both issue, or addressing the legal issues by the lawyers and then let it get it back to us? Let's move this, I, I, I agree with Mr. Kelly at all the eyes here that, you know, this is taking incredibly too much time. And now, we're saying that after it goes to the lawyers, then we're going to try to get a joint meeting with the Board of Supervisors, who has gone, you know, who has told us on numerous times that they're not going to sit down with us.
Mr. Chairman, may I respond to that respectfully? I think it's really simple. The lawyer or a Board of Supervisor, from the Board of Supervisor's standpoint, there was a draft MOU. Their lawyer did say that what was presented was legally sound. We then received that and our lawyer worked with us as well. When we look at what Mr. Fortune just presented in terms of legal lease, there are only three sections in the Code of Virginia that are referenced. And the only discussion that the lawyers need to have in regards to the code is that the first draft was a summary and partially stated the code. And what we have asked for is for complete inclusion of the code. I don't think that takes a lot of debate and discussion. If you're going to quote the code, quote it in its entirety and leave your interpretation out of citing regulation. So, I think that piece is pretty easy to resolve. I think that what I'm hearing is we're still missing each other with where the joint meeting comes in. I think everyone is in agreement, from Dr. Hubbard's perspective and the other perspectives that have been shared, now that the attorneys have both worked with us individually, allow the attorneys to look, look at the revisions together and then bring it back in front of the board. So, I, I think we need to stop missing each other in that space. The next step in either recommendation is to give it to the attorneys and make sure that it is still legally sound. I think that's hurdle number one that we need to get over. I think the second piece is this, and for me, I'm just going to be real blunt. This is not a common practice. The Code of Virginia and our duties and role and responsibilities as a school board is very clear. I'm looking for good faith effort. If you're not willing to sit down and have a joint conversation as we develop something that is not common practice, but we see the need in order to get over a hurdle that we've not been able to overcome in the 10 years I've been on this board, then we doggone well should be able to sit down at that table and have a conversation. Because after the MOU is signed, the next step is how do we implement it? And we implement a joint MOU together. And maybe I've just been on this board too long, but tonight, I'm tired. It is hot time that elected officials in this county get over whatever it is and do what is right by these kids. Do what is right by our community. And I have had enough. And I know that's not politically correct and I do not intend to be quoted in the paper, so I hope for some grace for that. But at some point in time, we ought to call it what it is and say what it's not. We have a school that needs to be built. We have a need in the community. We are willing to step outside of what is common practice to have a joint MOU. We've been asking for the same thing for years. At some point, we have got to turn the page. I am in favor of Recommendation Two. We are not moving forward unless we have an agreed-upon joint MOU. If you want to play ball, then come to the table now. Those concludes my comments.
Thank you. Other board comments? Again, as I understand it, we have two choices. One choice is to allow the attorneys after we have injected what we feel should be a part of this MOU for the school board. And, of course, the Board of Supervisors have injected what they feel are important. The lawyers would come together and formulate one MOU based on the request of each board. Option one would be to, they present that and we vote on it. Option two, correct me if I'm wrong, would be the same thing, but we ask for a joint meeting after that and then we vote on it. That's, that's how I see it, that's the two options. If there are no more questions or concerns or comments, I would call for a vote on the option that this board wants to support.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we send the CCPS revised MOU to the Board of Supervisors Attorney, that the Board of Supervisors and the CCPS Attorney draft one MOU that achieves collaborative board consensus and that the board establishes a joint meeting to review and collectively adopt the MOU. The joint meeting will include updates on BGEs trailer project. And the joint meeting agenda also reflects next steps for LCES trailers and BGEs renovation.
Second.
It's been moved and popular, second, that we would, and I'm saying it right, we are, we are going with Option Two. Is that what your motion, that's what the motion?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Ms. Clerk, would you call for the vote?
Mrs. Sears?
Aye.
Mr. Fortune?
Aye.
Dr. Hubbard?
Nay.
Mr. Taylor?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Dr. Rollins Felds?
Aye.
It's been moved and popular, second, that we go with Option Two. Let's move ahead. The next agenda item is under new business. First read CCPS VSBA policies update, Mr. Mudd.
Good evening, Chair Taylor, Vice Chair Fortune, members of the board. Tonight, I bring to you the second half of the VSBA policy suggested changes that have been uploaded to Board Docs in draft mode for your review. The Virginia School Board Association provides updates in February and May of each year that are based on changes in law and regulations. In addition, a few policies are revised for editorial reasons or to correct technical errors. In the following presentation, we have the policies that are currently being revised and/or reviewed by Caroline County Public Schools. Tonight, we are providing the first read of the remainder of the May 2025 VSBA policy review. If you recall, last month, I came before you with a selection of May policies that required small changes and did not require a full review of, by a policy review team. Tonight, I'm bringing forward the additional May policies, most of which needed more significant review and conversation. We engaged a policy review team in July, which included Mr. Fortune as board representative. Team members reviewed identified policies and discussed current related policies and/or regulations and made decisions on policy updates. A number of these changes are reflective of new legislation. Policies reviewed are as follows. Policy DJF, purchasing procedures. Policy EB, school crisis emergency management and medical emergency response plan. Policy EBB, threat assessment teams. Policy EBBC, opioid antagonists. Policy GCL, professional staff development. Policy IGBA, programs for students with disabilities. Policy IGBJ, advanced or accelerated mathematics. Policy JC, school attendance areas. Policy JEG, exclusions and exemptions from the school, from school attendance. Policy JFC, student conduct. Policy JFCM, student cellphone and smart device possession and use. Policy JRCA, school services providers' use of student personal information. Policy KGD, notification of school-connected student overdose. Policy KQ, commercial, promotional, and corporate sponsorships and partnerships. Policy LC, charter schools. Policy LC-E, charter school application and addendum. Thank you for your time and attention to our policies first read. Please refer to Board Docs to review all changes in draft mode. And we'll return in September for approval of revised and reviewed policies presented here tonight.
Can I ask?
I'm sorry.
Can I ask a question? The new policy IGBJ, I know this is a first read, so, this is, if I'm understanding, the advancement or accelerated mathematics is a new addition. The successful implementation of such policy will depend on the availability of resources, qualified teachers, and a clear process for identifying eligible students. Without proper planning, this could lead to equity issues or a lack of support for students in these programs. I guess my question is, are we prepared and we have a plan to implement this?
Yes, sir. Last month, I shared with you some of the legislative changes that occurred. And we reviewed at that time our plan for our accelerated math pathways, which was really a pathway that we already had established here in Caroline. However, we did need to align some of our practice in regards to the component where students are automatically enrolled in advanced coursework. And so, this policy is bringing forward officially and adding that policy to our, to our CCPS body of policies. But we started planning for this back in June and are well underway with it.
So, the Caroline spin is on it?
Yes, sir. And we had, we had most components already in place. One of the biggest changes was the auto enrollment of students based on cut scores provided to us by the DOE. And so, we've addressed that and looked to that and have implemented the changes for this school year.
Are there other questions regarding the first read? Thank you, Mr. Mudd.
Thank you.
That takes us to board and committee reports and comments. I'll start with Mr. Shaw.
Well, we've not had a lot of committees going on in the last couple of months for obvious reasons. But I will state that Rob Wright is now the director of the Chesapeake Bay Governor's School, which is pretty cool because he graduated from the Chesapeake Bay Governor's School. So, that's kind of a full circle moment. I did, don't personally know him, but we have people on the board who would like, "I remember when he was a kid," which is, is really cool. So, that's neat. And he has jumped in headfirst and done some great jobs so far with us. For the, for University of Mary Washington on that board, the ATI board, we have all our vacancies filled. They have done, gone around, they beat all the bushes and able to get some people to fill all that. So, that is all I have, Mr. Chairman. I am looking forward to the school year, but from a personal moment, guys, seriously, what are you thinking, dominating me? Come on. I saw that on here and Lisa was already like, "Did you not read your packet?" I was like, "I saw like somebody's getting a VSBA something." So, I'm sure that Jawanda did something or whatever, like she always does. And we're going to be like, "Yeah, Jawanda, you're the best ever." But thank you, I'm honored, I'm sincerely humbled and it, and surprised. And, no, I don't want to get choked up, so I'm going to stop talking about it. I will say, back to school night was a lot of fun, open house, whatever we call it now. I say this every year and, like, you just don't know, like, how much progress we've made. I mean, I used to go into those schools and it's like we had a leaky roof or the HVAC wasn't working or whatever it was and we're piecing stuff together. It looks better every year, but it gets older. Our custodial staff, the maintenance crew, they do a wonderful job. The teachers were all out shaking hands and happy. And it was such a great, welcoming, warm environment. Mr. Coleman, God bless him, was running around like his hair was on fire, collecting forms and passing everything out. But it's just, it's, you know, for me, it's my kid's last first day this year. And that was like a hard thing to take when you take that picture and you see him and you're just like, "Whoa." Caroline, you guys have done a great job with both of my kids and I'm just eternally grateful, extremely humbled tonight. And I'm proud collectively of the work that we do. Mr. Chairman, I joke about you calling me and stuff, but, you know, I mean, those are good heartfelt conversations where we're bouncing these ideas off of each other and deciding, "I applaud you and, "Lindell, for saying we're going to have this discussion in public, "Let's just talk about it and we'll, we'll get there." And I appreciate the leadership that this team has. And, Dr. Calverick, I swear, if we go to another convention and someone else asks me if you're available for a job and I have to keep telling them lies, like, "No, she's never leaving, ever, she's not interested, we have a chain and a ball and she's not allowed, she's only allowed to leave when we let her." You do a fantastic job. And in July, when we went to the, the Capitol Conference, I was approached by three different people, other superintendents, who talk about you and the leadership that you provide at a regional and a state level. And it, of course, that makes us look good, like, you know. And I really appreciate that, but they're like, "Do you know what a peach that you have as a superintendent?" And it's like, "Yeah, of course we do, we're blessed. I think everybody on, at this table realizes how great you are." But I think you're right, this table does a really good job. We don't always agree on everything together, but I think we always keep the main thing the main thing. And that's, that is what I'm the most proud of as a school board member in Caroline. I'll, I'll go on forever, so I'll quit, I'll quit, I'm going to get emotional, stop, go ahead.
That's okay. Mrs. Sears?
Good evening, welcome back, everyone. From open houses to orientation to transition day. Personally, my youngest has now entered the high school, so I got to experience Transition Day for the first time. And it was great. He came home just talking about how nice it was to not have crowded hallways as he tried to navigate this new terrain. So, that was amazing. At the end of July, I started to drop my kids off for conditioning. Fall sports conditioning was happening at schools, the marching band was out at camp. And it was great to see kind of all the students out and starting to get back into the swing of things and seem excited. And so, it was really exciting to feel like we're starting the year off just with such positive energy. And so, I'm excited to see the games that are coming up, the competitions. I will be all over the place cheering everyone on as much as possible. Both my children are super active this year. So, if you see me running, it's probably to catch the next thing. For the board, I wanted to personally welcome Mr. Fortune to the classroom as he accepted a teaching position this year. Welcome, I know you will be amazing and your students are lucky to have you. And I really just want to wish everyone, our staff, our teachers, our leadership, a really great school year. And we're all going to put in the hard work, students included, and have fun doing it and just making positive strides. Thank you.
Dr. Rollins Felds?
Awesome, thank you so much.
Thank you so much. I also wanted to say, welcome, Jay. I pride myself in being poised and professional, but I won't apologize for being passionate. All right. There was a quote that came across my desk today and it said, "Pay attention to what you pay attention to," and I am a champion for kids, so that's my passion for tonight. So I wanted to say, welcome to Jay. Caroline's promise back to school supply drive, oh my word, it was amazing. I can remember year one of that and being outside in the heat, and it's just been great to be hosted at the high school, so thank you all for that. I've had the opportunity to do a little traveling with VSBA and did opening convocation with Page County, and so got them kicked off to a great year, and then came on back home and welcomed our Huskies back at Bowling Green Elementary. I think I saw more parents with tears than I saw kids, but that's always really sweet. I have a third grader this year, and so I'm glad to be at Bowling Green Elementary. Also wanted to pause and give a special shout out to Mr. Childs and Mr. Connor sitting there. The buses were rolling, there was a question from a parent, and I was able to say, "I think I can get you to the person that has the answer." And Mr. Childs, I just want to say publicly, I saw how you handled that parent's question, timely with grace, and then you knew them, and you knew the child, you knew the grandparent, and that relationship piece is just critical. Mr. Connor, I have a picky eater, and I'm telling you, he is that growing boy that eats and sleeps now, but I'm hearing about what he had for lunch, and he's gotta get to school to get breakfast, and so thank you and your staff. I've also heard some feedback from the community with what a relief it was that breakfast and lunches provided at no cost, and I heard parents talking about having to send school lunch money when we were in school and all these types of things, so I just wanted to pause and say thank you to you both that are working behind the scenes. Also wanted to give some kudos to the FFA advisors that were here. Those student organizations have a lot of extra hours, and those advisors are putting in the work, and I just wanted to say, while we're celebrating the kids, to just pause and celebrate them as well. Congratulations to you, Shaw, for our nomination from our, our committee, our, our board. Shaw gives me a hard time, y'all, and so, you know, I'm glad to do my part to put you for, for state recognition, but I know I'm his favorite, so we're, we're good. And I think that is all. Congratulations, let's get back in the swing of things. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Fortune.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First, thank you, Mrs. Sears, for that warm welcome to the teaching profession. I've always had an awesome, awesome, awesome respect for teachers. Now it's at a whole new level, so kudos, of course, to all that you do for our students. I actually did have an opportunity to participate in several committees since our last board meeting. On the 23rd of July, I attended the, our Carolina Education Foundation meeting. Some of the highlights of that meeting included the decision to raise the Innovation Awards Grant from a $200 to $750, I'm sorry, $200 to $750 for a total of $7,500 of funds available. In the past, $5,000 was available, but now $7,500 will be available to fund the Innovation Award recipients for the upcoming cycle. The applications are out now and are due on September the 2nd, I believe. Also during the meeting, we provided an update regarding our Hall of Fame endeavors, and we also reviewed the inaugural golf tournament. We reviewed the successes and discussed enhancements for next year, and earmarking the $25,000 for something specific. So we definitely had a great conversation about how to enhance that effort going forward. We also discussed looking at the reading Olympics program, which would run grades three through eight, and our library media liaison would discuss with this, this endeavor with our librarian team going forward. And we also discussed one class partnership per building for our dancing classrooms, which was an awesome, awesome, awesome success in its inaugural endeavor here in Caroline County Public Schools. On the 30th of July, as Mr. Mudd noted, I did participate with a thorough review of our policies. It was a wonderful half-day experience at the school board office. And finally, on the 11th of August, I participated in the latest Hall of Fame Committee meeting. So those are my activities and comments, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Hubbard.
Well, well, well. Evening, everyone. Evening, everyone. I hope everyone had a wonderful summer break. As we return to our buildings and classrooms, it's a great time to remember that the school is more than just a building. It's a living, breathing community, a vibrant ecosystem where everyone has a role to play. And I'm as, as excited as the rest of my colleagues here on the dais, welcome each and every one of you back to school. To our amazing students, Jay, welcome aboard. You know, we'll see how you end as opposed to still smiling as you are right now, especially sitting on my end of the, of the dais. You are the center of the ecosystem. Your curiosity, kindness, and participation bring our school community to life. How you treat your classmates in hallways, how you encourage in the classrooms, how you support one another, all contribute to the creating of a positive, nurturing environment where everyone can learn and everyone can grow. I encourage you to do the best that you can do, the best that you can be, be a positive force both in your schools and in your community. To our dedicated families, they are the essential link between our school ecosystem and the wider community. Their involvement, encouragement, and communication provide the stability, support our students need to thrive within this ecosystem. Their partnership helps ensure our entire school community is healthy and strong. To our incredible teachers and staff, you are the dedicated architects and the gardeners of our school ecosystem. From our bus drivers, administrators, to our cafeteria teams, custodians, classroom teachers, you cultivate the environment, nurture growth, and ensure all interconnected parts work together. Thank you for your passion, Dr. Fells, and commitment to making our school places where students feel safe, valued, and inspired. I am committed to ensure that our school ecosystem has the resources and policies needed to flourish. A healthy, supportive, interconnected learning environment is my top priority. I will be genuine, I will be true, and I will speak my mind as I think it best to serve our students. Let's all work together to cultivate an outstanding school year. Here's to a year of growth, connection, and success for everyone. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Hubbard. And Jay, I saved you for last because the best is always last, and so that's what you are to us, so.
Well, good evening. First of all, I'd like to thank the entire board, along with Dr. Neighbors, for welcoming me into this position. I'll be honest, I was very nervous for this meeting, but I'm excited to see how this year goes. I had my last first day of school this past week. I know my mom was very upset to take that photo, like, like you two down there, but I would say this past, the first week went very well. I've nev- I've never seen my friends so happy to get back into school than I have this year. And along with the Transition Day, I was actually able to be at the high school and see that, and unfortunately, the Transition Day was not a thing when I was a freshman. I had to walk around the halls going to teachers like, "Can you help me find this teacher?" So I, I think the Transition Day is great for allowing not just the freshmen, but like sixth, the sixth graders and kindergartners to just come in and build that confidence in a smaller environment before everyone else comes in and it's full-blown chaos. So, but I think the Transition Day went very well, and along with, I was also had the honor to be one of the student representatives at the freshman social back in July, so I'm very, this school year has started off very strong, and I'm very excited to see where it goes from here.
Well, thank you, Jay, and all the board members. As always, always say thank you for what you do, because our system would not be what it is were it not for the expertise that we have, and we very much appreciate the hard work and the long hours that you put in. I would certainly like to say congratulations to all of the students tonight, even though they, we don't expect them to sit here until the end of the meeting, but hopefully they can see it on the YouTube or know that we say congratulations to all of them. We are very proud of our students in Caroline. I say we have some of the best students anywhere, and if the students are good, that means their parents are good, and if their parents are good, we have a good community, and it all works out in the end. I'm very thankful tonight. One of our buses was involved in an accident today. That accident turned out not to be a serious accident, and there were no injuries. It could have been different. We could have been in a very sad situation tonight, but thanks to the Lord and to the drivers and whatever, we did not have any injuries, and that's, that's just something to be happy about. I did have an opportunity to go to the new teachers' breakfast, and I went through a lot of things during the first, before school started. Some of the, teach all of the teachers, everybody seemed to be, and not just teachers, but staff as well. We've got some great people, and so they're gonna do some great things, and we're gonna continue to be the great school system that we are. And finally, I will say thank you to this board, all of this board. We work together. We have ideas, we express our ideas, and we express them the way we see them, and that makes us good, and we are always going to do that. We are always going to do what we feel is in the best interest of the students of this county. I may not agree with every board member, every board member may not agree with me, but at the end of the day, we are all going to work together as one board, and we're gonna do the best we can to continue to move Caroline forward. And I say thank you again for all of your help. And at this time, I will turn it over to our superintendent for comments.
Thank you, Chair Taylor. I'm going to do calendar and kudos, kudos that have not yet been mentioned, so no redundancy. So in terms of calendar, the opening of the school year always invites families and staff members to pull out your planner and add some upcoming dates, and here are a few that you may want to take note of. As mentioned earlier tonight, our Hall of Fame application goes live on August 25th and runs through September 19th, so if you know someone who you believe meets the eligibility requirements, please submit them as a potential inaugural inductee. We have our homecoming and block party scheduled for Friday, October 3rd. Come on out and enjoy a good football game, but also the camaraderie and collegiality of the Caroline community. Also want to make you aware that we certainly have a number of kudos that are worthy of being said, and please forgive me, it's always dangerous to start calling people out, but our faith community was loud and proud in the last few weeks, and they are such amazing partners in education, and I want to simply say thank you to Jerusalem Baptist and to Oxford Mount Zion, who yesterday had a service and a flagpole prayer and blessed the schools. That was fabulous to be part of, and we're always so appreciative of the blessings that are sent our way for safety and achievement for our students and staff. Cardinal Baptist did a beautiful job supporting Madison, this past open house with bounce houses and slushies and good treats, and then Wright's Chapel was spectacular, as they always are on an annual basis, with their CCPS breakfast, and not only did they serve us great food, but they opened up Cindy's Closet, which is one of their missions, and our staff were able to go in with a discount and purchase things that they either needed personally and/or professionally. So those were some tremendous highlights. I would be remiss not to say thank you to our staff. It has been a very smooth and rewarding opening, and that does not happen without logistical planning and preparation over the summer, and so I just really wanted to take a moment to shout out all of our departments and say thank you for being the boots on the ground over the summer. I always say, it's like a grand opening of a Walmart on an annual basis. People can relate to what it takes to open up a super center Walmart. That's what it's like to open up a school division on an annual basis during the summer. So thank you, and I yield the floor.
Thank you. That takes us to closed session, and... My machine doesn't want to work. Oh, yes it does. Okay. Move to enter into closed session for the discussion of appointments, stipends, resignations, retirements, corrections, position changes, superintendent summative, and substitutes as authorized by Virginia Code 2.2-3711A3.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Call for the vote, clerk.
Dr. Rollins Fells?
Aye.
Dr. Hubbard?
Aye.
Mr. Fortune?
Aye.
Mrs. Sears?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mr. Taylor?
Aye. We are now in closed session.
Point of order, Mr. Chairman.
Do we certify that we only discussed those things that we went into closed session to discuss?
Point of order. A motion's been made and seconded, so we need to vote on the motion to come out and then we would do the certification.